Trustee Petrikov.
Okay. When we left it with the Fielding study the last time, I had asked several times, would they, are they experienced or would they incorporate an alternative vision as well as the three that they laid out for us? That was a how to restore rather than replace historic buildings or old buildings? And could we have an expert who could provide us with some insight once they already had the determination of what our needs are? When I looked at the website for the Fielding International, they are more focused and they do not appear to be best suited for a preservationist type of vision, that they don't have that experience for restoration of old buildings. I will tell you that I was a little disappointed that we just kind of left it there. And on the Fielding site, they say that they have 20 years of experience designing future-ready spaces for schools. And when I looked at their sites, they have program designs of space rather than any architectural designs that could potentially look at the cost savings efforts of renovating or rehabbing our existing buildings rather than tearing down and building new. Now, I don't want to go forward with that discussion because we haven't had it yet as a board. My concern is, is that if you, if we hire somebody to go out and connect with the community and all they have before them is the Fielding study, my worry is, is that that's what they're basically going to present as a selection of choices. And nothing will be discussed about an alternative path of restoration and rehab that is a potential option as well. And we have nothing to give any perspective on that. I have something from the National Trust for Historic Preservation that is in regards of older and historic schools and the role of a feasibility study. And they say here, "Potential problems include studies being conducted by architects unfamiliar with renovation, inflated cost estimates for renovation, limited or no community input, a bias against historic, hidden costs not accounted for, and minimal consideration of community impacts. A biased or incomplete feasibility study will not fully inform the general public or the school district about all their options." I want to make sure if we hire somebody to come in and conduct a study with the community, that this perspective should also be a choice included in what they have a conversation about. The impact of demoing and building new is significant. It's environmentally unfriendly. It's a carbon footprint unfriendly. It creates a great disruption in the neighborhood communities of any of the buildings that may be impacted in that regard. And I would like to have somebody research, because I can't remember that far back, but Miller and William Ford were two buildings that we completely demoed and built new on the same site. How long did that process take? And what impact did it have on that neighborhood during that time period of demo and reconstruction of a new building? Number one, I would like to know, because I want to make sure that when we go out and communicate with the community, they understand that this is not, any of these solutions that Fielding gave is not going to be done in a two-year timeframe. You're going to be going into neighborhoods disrupting their children's educational locations while we do whatever we do, be it renovation, rehab, new construction. But I want us to be honest with what these people are signing on for and what are they willing to pay for? What do they want at the end of the day? Do they want their money to go to something that will give them the educational opportunities they're looking for, but without the complete disruption of building new all over the city? Are they willing to pay and invest on new? And are we willing to erase the little history that's left in this community of some of our older buildings that have a unique significance to every neighborhood and are already an iconic piece, that's an anchor in that neighborhood? And can we effectively restore them, cost-effectively, and still get what we're looking for for the students? And are the parents willing to take that time to? Because a lot of these kids are not even going to be in the buildings by the time we get some of this done. They'll be graduated from high school and they'll never see that building.
Yes.
There's my speech.
What year was that? Miller?
The original was from the 2001 bond.
The current Miller building was built in the 90s.
Yeah.
And same with William Ford.
Right.
Those two, and Becker. Those three buildings were built in the mid-1990s.
Was that before you were?
Yeah, I don't think anybody here was on the.
I was going to say, if anybody knows, it's going to be David.
I was a substitute teacher.
I can't, yeah, I can't remember.
Yeah, no, I didn't know anything at that time.
I do know that.
And then they each had additions put on from the 2014 bond.
Yes, that is, not Miller, but Becker and William Ford.
Becker gear and William Ford.
Henry Ford had.
Oh, Henry Ford, yeah.
And William Ford.
William Ford too. Because I remember walking through it.
I do know that both Miller and, Miller, the old Miller and the old William Ford building, in talking with the operations director at that time, because he was still here when I got here, shared stories of going into the Miller building and they had to put structural cables in the ceilings to keep the walls, because the walls were bulging out. And then they also, when they, actually when the building was evacuated and it came time to take that building down, they were dropping sledgehammers through the floor and it was dropping right through the floor, because that building had deteriorated so much at that time, you know, at that point. So there does come a useful time when buildings do reach their useful end life, but that shouldn't
I would like.
Just be taken light.
Right, I would like somebody who's an expert in that.
Before that action is taken.
Trustee Petrikov, what are you recommending? Let's say, let's say like an old building, you go in it, you gut it out and rebuild from inside?
If that's, if that's a potential option. What I'm saying is, we need somebody who is an expert. And there are architects out there and firms that that's what they do. This Fielding study doesn't incorporate that. They didn't, they were not experts in that. And I asked several times, would they talk to somebody? But I never heard anything that was referenced that sounded like they had consulted anybody else who could give us a better picture. It may not be feasible, but I suspect that that might not necessarily be so. It's just that there are people who are visionary in a different way. And so that's what they pursued, is their style of restoration and/or what they thought was going to get us where we wanted. I want to make sure that we honor what many members of our community also have talked with me over the past couple of years of what they are looking for and are concerned that we will just go ahead with the most expedient plan rather than something that is, you know, we're the, we're the city of Greenfield Village. And yet we seem to want to just erase everything in our community as quickly as possible and put up the easiest, cheapest. And it's not always the, it's not always really the cheapest, number one. And number two, there's, there could be a lot of roadblocks that people don't understand would come with the full demoing and building of a new, that timetable and the disruption to their students in the neighborhood that they wouldn't even be considering because they just think it's going to, you know, it's like TV and we're going to have a new building up in a year's time.
So are you referring to, maybe they look at all of our buildings or are there?
Well, they've already got to start, because Fielding did do an assessment of our buildings.
I get that. No, but you're saying you wanted to do like another option.
I want, I want, yes, to make sure that we have all of our potential paths on the table.
Sure. I'm trying to bring it out where the information is there. So would you be saying we want to keep all of the buildings and look at potential restoring inside of them? Or are there some buildings that just pretty much outlived their life?
I'm not even going there at this point. At this point, if we're going to be discussing hiring a consultant to go talk with the community, I want the option on the table of not just the three scenarios that Fielding gave us, but that there is a potential and what are you willing to invest in this community and at what cost?
So that sounds like that would be the next step before you, we go out to the community, is what I'm hearing you say.
No, no. What I'm saying is, if we want to move ahead with getting out to the community, we have a more generic question than, do you want A, B, or C from the Fielding study? Because then they're just voting on something and we're basically going to assume that that is what, one of three choices. We have a fourth alternative of potentially restoring and rehabbing. You can put that on there without actually necessarily having, if we have time to go ahead and do a quick reevaluation using the data we already have collected.
Yeah, because I think Fielding's already determined that which buildings need to be renovated, which ones need to be replaced in their.
But they're not experts.
Right. And so I don't think we have to, as Dr. or Mr. Berry said, I don't think we need to do every building. But just those that were potentially shown out to be that it's better to replace versus, you know, renovate. So we can, it's a much smaller number.
Number, right.
Dr. Milaiko, you want?
Yeah, I was just going to ask, thank you, President Berry. Could we get like a, obviously not in-depth, like an eight-month study, but could we get another contractor architect or someone just to give us some, that data, have them come in for a second opinion at some of the buildings?
Yeah, because we've already determined the needs by a building by building basis.
So we can look at those.
That's, it takes the most time, because you have to walk the building, work with administration to know about all the mechanics of it. So that, that process, which should take a lot.
And I think like, just for example, like in the 19 bond, I don't know if it, I mean, that's what we were going to do to Lori, was getting the biggest where we were gutting out a lot of it to restore. I think two things though, that really don't necessarily have to do with per se taking down a building is, for example, we had it in the 19 and I think we would need it in any bond moving forward. I've been, you know, vocal about this, is just the new special education facility at some point, which I don't think would impact that.
No, no.
And we got to strongly consider, because it's coming up in all my, and I know Trustee Thorpe once talked about free college and how that will impact space, let's just say in our partnership with the college. But we got to start thinking of early childhood, because one of the biggest concerns superintendents have that as we're phasing in early child universal, most districts, including ours, would not have space to handle universal altogether. We've taken on a lot, so we have to think about that, because we're always in a, and it's been to the board level sometimes, you know, where we've had our Young Fives program versus others in space and buildings. So I think that is an important piece to be looking at that won't impact what you're saying. Because you're looking at other areas that we just need. I mean, things like technology and other things would be, but I do think if we get a second opinion, you know, on the buildings and maybe reiterate, because Fielding did, the one thing about the Fielding, regardless of the plans, is it had a tremendous amount of data on each of the buildings and it gave us a lot of detailed information. So if, I mean, Tom, we could do, is that possible? We could do that while we go to the public?
Yeah, because this is statistical analysis of the cost. And it might, not hold me to it, but to say, all right, I think Fielding's interpretation was, it's more cost-effective and feasible to replace it versus renovate it. So I would not be surprised that the renovation could be slightly higher than what the cost they said to do.
That's not necessarily true. And that's why I'm saying you need somebody who's an expert in the renovation and rehabbing of older buildings rather than Fielding, who is really more dedicated and maybe have been slightly biased in their, their track of what they considered. And that's, and that's my concern, is that they're in business for one thing and I'd like to find somebody who isn't more of an expert in the rehabbing and can give us a different analysis.
One of the things though, I would say that, and I remember from the presentation that they did recognize, they did say certain buildings, like for example, Fortson, I mean, that's going nowhere. We're, that's a building, you know, you're going to, just like in the last bond, you're going to enhance, that's a, you know, and there's other buildings in the district that are probably in similar. The other factor that you have is, in some buildings, it may not necessarily be building totally new and tearing down, because you have new additions and other pieces where you may have to look at the older sections you're replacing, but you're keeping the newer sections that were, and it's in several of our schools that I can think of where we have that, where it's been phased in over other bonds. So those might be other considerations.
I just want to make sure that we are completely thorough in what we are considering and that we have the best trajectory that's going to meet the needs of the community while understanding that the community has many needs.
Correct.
I just want to put it out there, and Trustee Moze wants to speak. I just want to put it out there that you mentioned Miller and William Ford, and those are two big trophies in our city. People remember the old Miller and the old William Ford. So whatever pain that the district went through and the community went through for a few years, look where we're at now, 30-some years later. Trustee Mozeb?
I believe Trustee Watts wanted to speak first, but I can, you can go.
Well, I think my questions were more, I think, and maybe I'm getting ahead of myself, for the RFP and to be able to speak to the RFP, but it sounds like, am I wrong in thinking that we are pausing on the RFP because we're asking for additional analysis?
Well, looking at the timetable, I believe the board has typically wanted to go out in November. So we have November of '25, obviously we're not doing anything this year, November of '25 and November of '26. For the board to put something on the ballot for November, they have to do about mid-July. They have to have it approved and going to, you know, the elections.
Of next year. Not this year.
July of '25. So that's our timetable for if we want to hit the July of '25. We can actually, from what, you know, Mrs. Petrikov said, is you can do them concurrently.
Yeah.
Because the first one won't take very long.
Correct.
And the second one, we'll have to get in place and depending on who we chose, has to learn about Dearborn to begin with and the history and all the data. So you could do them concurrently, because the first one will get completed well before, you know, the second one is ready to go out. Because, you know, part of this meeting is, what do we want that, you know, you know, firm to do?
Firm to do, yeah.
Do we want them to, how many site visits or how many public sessions, how many surveys? They're going to want all that upfront, so they can give you an accurate price of what it's going to cost. So you can do those concurrently.
So we can do both at the same time, ask for somebody who's an expert in historical buildings to get their perspective as what the price per square foot would be for a renovation, while also discussing the RFP or discussing like what we want this community engagement to see, to sound like, look like, what are the, what are the metrics that we want them to have, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And it could be the same firm, depending on the firm that's bidding. You know, it could, one firm could do both activities.
Okay. Can, I guess my, my comments and suggestions speak to the community engagement? So I don't want to get too ahead of us. So, Trustee Mozeb, if you wanted to speak of something, then I'll hold off on my questions.
I just want to mention that back in 2019, right after the bond discussion, that was the plan to stay on the route of keeping our buildings and just keep on repairing them. The voters, even though with a small margin, said no, we want a different option. We want newer schools, like other schools, that other districts that we see, brand-new schools, brand-new facilities, where now learning has changed a lot over, especially with the pandemic now. So we really have to look at futuristic plans for buildings where students don't have to worry about air conditioning or heating and/or infrastructure issues that disrupts their educational journey in our schools. So while I do appreciate our historic buildings and our history, but I believe we've done it at Fortson in 2024, when the new addition went through, it's seamless with the older building. But we do have buildings that are arriving at their end of life. And we, as hard as it is, we have to accept the fact that the voters have asked for new plans, bold plans, and newer buildings.
Trustee McDonald?
I agree with some of what Trustee Mozeb just said, but I just don't see how you can equate that that bond not passing was because people wanted new buildings. There's a multitude of reasons why that bond might have not passed. And I don't think that you could just say it's because everybody was in favor of building new.
No, no, not everybody, 50% of the people.
Well, no, I disagree, because they could have just didn't like the cost or didn't want, I don't think you could say that it was because they didn't, they wanted new buildings.
You're right. We know there's probably 25 to 30% of voters are just going to vote no on any tax. We know that going in. So going back to the numbers, how do you reach the people in the middle? And the people in the middle, we heard loud and clear. I mean, I know Dr. Milaiko attended some of the meetings, I personally attended some meetings, we all did. The people in the middle said, we're willing to write you a check, but we want to see buildings. Now, when that happened, we came back and went back to the, you know, square one, and that's when we hired this company, Fielding. They came back with a completely different version where people that want to keep old buildings, hate the fact that you might tear down the building for environmental reasons, what have you, then they became the loud voices in the room. What this is going to come down to, and I've said this before, this is not for my kids or my grandkids, this is for like 30, 40, 50, 70 years from now. It's going to come down to, does this administration and this, this board have what it takes not to try to please people, but do the right things for the future of this district? Because this district is in pain right now. I don't care, I'm going to go ahead and say it. We, we, there's a lot of issues we're dealing with. We can't keep looking the other way. And if we don't start competing, like you mentioned, those districts are way ahead of spending money, we don't start competing with those districts, it's going to hurt Dearborn. It's going to hurt the school district. It's going to hurt the value of our homes in Dearborn. So I don't want, I don't want to try to please different parts of the community. If we can sit here and honestly say, this is the best way forward for Dearborn, then put something out to the voters and let them decide, that's what I want to be part of. But to try to please Mr. so-and-so on Bingom or my good friend over here on Rose Beer, that's, that's just going to make us weak and we're just going to continue on Band-Aids on buildings moving forward. Trustee McDonald?
I agree with you, but I also, I think we're setting ourselves up for either we tear down all and build all new, or, but I just want to make sure that we can look at each individual building.
100%.
And some buildings may be at their end of life and may need, but I just.
Trustee Petrikov brings a good point to the table. There's a building out there that, you know, I'm not going to mention, mention which one, but should have been probably torn down 25 years ago. But we keep changing windows and adding, you know, brand-new roof and this, this and that. And you want to talk about environmental issues, that building doing the right thing for our students and their health, people, boards should have made the right decision there, but for political reasons, they didn't. Trustee Petrikov?
And I just want to rephrase. New doesn't necessarily make it a better educational experience. I know people think that bright noon, shiny, but if you can renovate a building, save some costs, but put in the amenities that you need to make it, you can have just as quality an education inside of that building while preserving the building, not, not impacting the environment in a negative fashion. New isn't always necessarily going to give you a better product.
I agree, but we're competing for students, okay? When I walk into buildings in other cities and other districts, I'm like, wow, wow, wow. I mean, let's use what we're doing on the other side of Michigan Avenue, the liberal arts building. We finally got around to it. We finally had an administration that said, this is the right things, this is the right thing to do for our students moving forward. And we have the board, which is the same board for the audience out there, that saw that we made a decision, I think it was a great decision. Do we have what it takes to do the same thing here? That's all I'm going to keep pointing out there. Trustee Mozeb, do you have something to say? Trustee Watts, going back to your thoughts.
So I think a couple of things. I think my wow and your wow may be the same, it may be different. But I think that's part of it, is that we have to ask the voters. And so all of this, we can come up here all day and we can say, this is what we want, but we are here to hear from the voters. So I think part of this, and this is the important part, is when we have the RFP, we need to make sure that our, that RFP, that consultant that we bring in has as much equipment, as much data as possible, because they are educating our voters. So the more information we can give them that is clear and concise, not over the top, not, we're not using words that are, you know, when it comes down to, we can get very complicated in our terminology. And then what's going to happen? No one's going to hear it, because you're going to say, I don't understand what this is. So I want a consultant, and I'm going to start, who is clear, concise, uses very everyday language. If my parents who are immigrants do not understand it, they are not doing a good job, number one. I also want a consultant who says, the school of the future is not going to be the same of what it is right now. It will always be teaching students, the building may be different. So if we have those options for the building, Fielding study, which was a great study that he put together, however, you have three options, and we know there's more, but people will see the three options and think, these are the only three options out there. And we need a consultant that says and can understand the education system and say that there is multiple options out there. What speaks to you? What speaks to me as a former teacher is going to be much different than what speaks to my husband. He walked into a classroom, was like, this was great. I walked into the classroom, I said, this is not age-appropriate. So there's a lot of things, and this consultant needs to have that understanding going into these rooms. So it could be that one particular group on the one particular day wants to see X, Y, and Z, because that is their lived experience or that is what they are accustomed to for what they think of as school. So my perception of school will not be the same as anybody else's, nor do I want that on there, because we will not be around for that education component, right? We're not going to be around to see this. So I think a lot of it is, what can we give? What requirements do we give to our consultants so that our voters, who ultimately will have to, like, they'll come back to us and say, this is what we gathered, and now we have to make the decision. But I want to make sure that they've done their due diligence and everybody has said, yes, I have seen, I was, they asked me and I gave them my response. And not the, I was never asked or I didn't know when this was happening. People's lives are busy, I get that. But so that we then are fully informed, this is what we are hearing, and then when we put that on the ballot, that it's, it's successful for our students.
Trustee Thorpe?
Similar to a lot of things that have been mentioned, talking about like, I'll use the high school example. You can go into a brand-new high school and think it looks beautiful. And then you can go into Fortson and think it looks beautiful. So it is in the eye of the beholder, and we do want to try to do our best to make it a good learning environment for the foreseeable future. I agree with the idea, like, when we first got this plan, it's like, man, this is destroying an awful lot in rebuilding. So maybe we need to see what the cost would be with renovating a lot of the school buildings. But in everything that they gave us, I'm looking at a slide right now, the shortest timeline they said was 22 years. So when we're saying we're not going to be around, anyone who having, having a child right now might not have their kids be impacted by this, maybe, depending on the timeline. But I would, I would agree that we, we need to make sure that today's community knows, we'll get this started, but you're not going to expect this, probably within the lives of your children, it's your grandchildren that would have this.
Anybody else? Just Milaiko?
Just, I want to make comment too. I think, so I think we all love this district and many of us have been here many years. And I think all the comments are, because you do and you love the students, you want to see it sustained over years. And I do agree, it's going to be that long-term. And I think that's why we're making these tough choices here to move forward. For example, that we said we're going to bring this before you just today, to get back on track. I think that we knew in the millage, the operational millage that was passed, everyone got behind it. And that's how, including the community, and I see the PTAs out here and others, you know, unions, teachers, administration, but that was kind of uniform across the board. We know that in a bond potential, you're going to have things here in this part of the district there, there are going to be some differences. And I think when it comes down to it, because I'm hearing old, new, other things, I think what's going to happen, it is going to be a question for the community, but everyone is probably not going to get exactly what everyone wants. But hopefully we can come up with a plan that people can. but everyone is probably not going to get exactly what everyone wants. But hopefully we can come up with a plan that people can, uh, live with, and it's a compromise, and we feel, like you had said, that we can take it to the voters and say, this is the right thing to do. Because the reality is, is when we get budget from the state or the federal government, we can reallocate those funds with the approval of the board. This we do not, we cannot do on our own because, as Mr. Wall said, the infrastructure. So we need the community to partner with us. It's the only way it's going to get done. So what we need to do is work together, and I think this is a very rich and good discussion, to come up with what we think and take it to the voters after we collect the data. And then once we do, I think everyone has to get behind it one hundred percent, even if you didn't get exactly what you want. Once we decide, once, when and if. I don't think it's an if, because President Barry, I remember when you just came as president in two thousand, uh, twenty, and we didn't know anything about the pandemic coming, and I remember you speaking and me, and we were getting ready, I think at a community event, what are some of the big issues? Well, we know at some point we're going to have to go for a bond. So I think everyone knows there's a need. Pandemic put it on hold. We've known that for a long time. I think we can come together, uh, for the interest of the students, despite the differing opinions, which I think is healthy that we hear. We put the, the data together, and then ultimately it is going to be a question for the community and what, what they want to see in the future of this district for the long-term sustainability. So that's where I'm at with it, but I think it is the right thing to do. And I think it is the right thing to have these difficult conversations that may be uncomfortable at times, and it's okay. But I'm confident we can come together as a board and administration to do what we need to do and come up with this plan once we collect the data. And I appreciate all the board members' input, and I thank you for your comments tonight.
It's a good, very good discussion. What we're hearing is, I'll get to you in a second. Excuse me. What we're hearing is we need to put more information out there, listen to our constituents, regroup, and make the best possible decision. So yeah, we need to, we, we need to poke right now the different options, everything like that. So I don't think we're disagreeing on anything. We're all pretty much in agreement. Um, you know, Trustee McDonald.
I have a comment and then, um, kind of a question or some information that I'd like. My comment is, it's really difficult for anybody to get their minds around what actual education is going to look like thirty years from now. Because we've got AI coming. We've got so many things that are just going to really upend everything that we know. And people are, um, very, what's really working now is, um, getting large groups of students together collaboratively and working on projects. And so I'm assuming that that kind of thing will, will be, um, forward into the future as well. So I've just wanted to make the comment that just grasping what it could look like thirty years from now is a difficult concept. So you have to, you know, get out of your normal train of thinking and just think possibilities, because things are happening fast and things are going to change tremendously. The other thing I wanted, when I was looking, reviewing the fielding study again, they talked a lot about the concept of K-eight buildings. And, um, we have K-eight buildings, and they talked about like, um, mostly the, the pros and the cons that go along with it. I would just like some information on, since we have K-eight buildings, um, what are the pros and cons? Do they, do the community tend to like those better because their students are in that particular building for a longer course of time? Do they not like that they, they think that when a child hits like their pre-teens, they're ready to move into a different environment? You know, so I just kind of like some information on our existing K-12 builder, I mean, K-eight buildings, and how the community feels about them and the teachers and the people that are involved with those. Because they mentioned a lot about K-eights, but we have them. So I'd just like some information on how we're doing with ours.
Sure. Uh, when I went to school way back in the days, it was, you know, junior high schools, right? Before you got to high school, you were in ninth grade. Then this big change with the ninth grades going. And I thought that was the only setup, right? The only structure.
Right.
Then we start going to conferences and you start reading and looking at things. There's districts right down the street that have K-3.
Yeah.
Before, then they have 4th through 8th, or it's just different setups. Maybe we do need to look at all that. What, what are the possibilities, you know?
Oh, we have that at Salina.
Right.
Well, we have that at Salina. We have something similar.
We've got a little bit of everything.
Yeah, we've got a little bit of everything. So we do have the data, so if we can get that, that are gathered. So the, the first comment you made too, that we don't know what it's going to look like thirty years from now, but I know one thing. It's changed when, you know, when I was back at Salina forty years ago, when I walk into those classrooms and some of those desks still looked the same, something wrong with that.
Agreed.
Same thing with the Liberal Arts Building. When you walk in, you know, I was in that school back in the early eighties, and you walk in, it's the same, same desk, same front table, same boards. So change, change is difficult.
Yeah.
Change is very difficult. So I'm very proud of this board that we're even, who is it? Jim?
Finish your thought.
Yeah. So she knows when to interrupt me because I lose my thought. So, uh, yeah, change is difficult, but I'm very proud of this board that we're willing to have this discussion. This is not like, you know, I'm debating Adil or I'm agreeing with Irene. This is, this is the discussion that, that's why we're here tonight.
It's okay. You can agree with me.
What's that?
You can agree.
Kind of sort of always agree with you.
Do you want to, Joe?
Trustee Thorpe.
Oh, sorry.
So one thing we're talking about is, is long-term. Think what thirty years ago looked like in buildings. We had computer labs because we had open space. We would have certain rooms in each building, I think, at that point. We might have a dozen computers. Forget the internet. Then all of a sudden we have to keep upgrading. Now we've got all the computers on cards, and we don't have to run the wires all through everywhere because we've got the Wi-Fi going on. So a lot will change. The other thing I was going to mention though, um, because I forget if this presentation was done originally in May or June of last year. If people are wondering why so long until we came back to it, it was a decision that the board had made because we knew we had the Hold Harmless Millage coming up, and we did not want to confuse the voters between the two different issues. Uh, so if anyone thinks we were kicking the can by not doing anything then or, or now asking for additional time now, no, we know that it's a very important thing. We don't want to have to keep coming back. We want to make sure we've got everything set once.
I believe we did the responsible thing as a board. Trustee McDonald.
Just another comment. Um, we talked about, uh, this district, and I just have to say, I'm so proud of this district in many ways. But we generally are way ahead of other districts, even across the country, in the way we educate and the programs that we set up and things that we do. So this community, I'm sure, will take on this challenge and will, um, will give good input and will be engaged. And I just think it's, like, um, trustee Watts said, it's important that we get their input and their buy-in, whatever way we go. But I just want to say that for so long I've been proud of this district because we do think we're ahead. And I think, once again, we're showing that that's what we're doing and that's what we need to do, and it's important.
Yeah, I mean, what we do is amazing things, programs, uh, the, the partnership between us and Henry Ford College, everything. But obviously, that was very powerful, that one, how far behind we are in investing in our infrastructure. We want to catch up, at least in that department. Okay, I know this was a, this was a meeting just to start the discussion. So trustee Watts?
Just something really quickly that I thought about. We don't know what thirty years will be. I think that there are individuals out there who know exactly what thirty years will be. And they're prob, they may be in our community, but I'm saying the technology that's happening right today, that's being in the labs, well, we will see in the classrooms. Like, for instance, I know somebody that has glasses that has a computer in it. So that is there. So I think we, to, for this consultant to be aware that the forward-thinking is, that's what we're looking at. When I'm thinking forward-thinking, what is that technology? And also, we know the philosophy behind the schools is what is, how, what is the corporations? The, the, the relationships that we have with corporations and what is their understanding of education as well? And that's something that at a federal level they've been discussing. So having a consultant who has sort of knowledge of what forward-thinking technology means in the classroom.
Thank you.
I, I just want to appreciate the board's discussion tonight because it shows very openness. We're not rushing the judgment. We really want to get that feedback back. And I really urge the public to participate because, you know, we're here for, you know, however long, and we want to make sure we're setting the right path for Dearborn going forward. Because my kids live here. Eventually we'll get married and have kids someday. You know, their kids will be part of this whole process. And I, I just also want to put the sense of urgency. As Mr. Andrews can attest, you know, our needs are growing, outpacing our funding capability. And so we're going to see issues that are starting to rise that actually affect kids and programs. A good example is, um, Bryant had electrical issue. It was down for what, two weeks, three weeks? A month and a half. If that happened during the school year, what would we have done with Bryant? We would have probably had to re-split those kids up and go all across the district because we don't have a place to put nine hundred kids in another building. And if that happened during the school year, that was beyond our control, was unexpected, a whole power failure, and that's something that with DTE, it took forever to address. So those are the things I'm afraid of, that, that we have to kind of work on getting an, an answer to this issue. I don't want to rush the judgment which direction we want to go, but you still got to have this sense of urgency that we just can't keep waiting. Thank you.
Can I add too, just, so when requests are coming in from buildings and things with the federal dollars and our balanced budget, and all districts are facing with, you know, the federal monies are gone, one of the things like we are going to have to with our budgeting in our, uh, infrastructure renovations and upgrades and things that we're doing, a lot of things we're going to have to say no, even though it might be nice to have, because we have to do the things that we have to have, like HVAC, heat. Those are the decisions we're making and Tom's making every day now. And so when the requests are coming in to us, we are not able to approve a lot of the nicer things that we would like to have. You know, for example, uh, you know, upgraded courts or athletics and things like that that we, we want, but we have to make a, a cha-change. And I'm just using that as an example because I'm a big athletic supporter, but there's other things that could be in there that are coming from buildings, um, as well. And we, we just had that discussion today on, like, bleachers at a school, and we just don't have the money because we have to put it into other things. So those are the decisions that we're making on cabinet every day now because of the infrastructure needs that we're, we're starting to have. So I think, I appreciate Tom putting that up and, you know, the urgency that we do want to. And that's why when I have my gen admin and we say, we just, these requests, we haven't been able to approve them because we have to do health, safety, and the necessity things to keep, you know, kids safe in schools right now.
Just, you good?
Just, oh, go ahead. I have requests for information as well. Um, as far as from the list that we've had for the 2019 bond, and then, um, the Esser money that came in and we put in more into the HVACs and into the infrastructure. Is there a simple formula where you can tell us, okay, we were asking for two hundred forty-five million, we spent this much, there's still that much of need, and we have accumulated more need probably in those four years, um, to say, or five years now, to say this is where we at as far as the high need number?
Yeah, I think if we're doing that dual approach of bringing in that expert to look at the historical value, they're going to have to kind of update that as part of their process to make sure we still have a good number of what our needs are going forward. Because that, from what, 2019, some of it's been taken care of, you know, through the, the Esser funds and through that energy bond. But again, you know, as things progress, it's, you know, it's, you know, many years later that other things might have come across. So we'll update that as part of that process.
Mr. Wolf?
If I may, uh, this kind of question for David, maybe, he's, since he's our histori historian expert. But looking back in the years, obviously the public contributed heavily into building the schools, but I, I recall also corporations, private sector contributed somehow to building the schools or naming rights, things like that. So if we can get any kind of data or information as far as who contributed what and big numbers
Sure.
um, to, to the buildings of, of newer buildings.
Yeah, we can try and look into that and see, you know, uh, I will tell you that a, a lot of, a lot of that stems back to stories of, you know, how like if I tell you a story and then you tell a story and then you tell a story. Over the years, those stories have grown. Um, if, if you, in, in the very limited research that I have done, uh, even Fortson, for example, there's kind of this story out there that Ford, Henry Ford gave money. Maybe he did, maybe he didn't, but Fortson was built with a bond issue. That I, I've looked at the minutes of the board meeting that where it was approved, the bo, the board approved going to the voters for a bond issue. So, but that's a very valid, uh, it's definitely a very valid, uh, uh, resource to look into, to see if that's been part of it. And, and even if it's not been part in the past, maybe that's something we should look into for the future to help offset some of these costs. So excellent point.
I just noticed something tonight.
Yeah.
I thought he wrote a check for Ford.
Yeah. I do know that he did, uh, donate the land for the original, uh, William Ford, uh, building. He did donate the land, sold it to a dollar. Just for clarification, Becker and William Ford were built in nineteen ninety-two, and Miller was built in nineteen ninety-six, just for clarification.
Thank you. Thank you.
Also, if you're talking about looking at the change or the similarities of schools over the history of the district, all you need to do is turn around and look at the mural behind you that reflects the, the change and, and the similarities in, in education throughout our history in Dearborn. Um, I think that it's important that looking at any, uh, changes, physical changes, the instructional component has to be part of it. There's been so much more additional research on how brains work and how students behave, lighting, colors, uh, the, the actual physical space itself, all contributes, uh, to the learning environment. And that can be done in a restored building and it can be done in a new building. A great example of a building where we maintain, not us, but the historical integrity of the building maintained, while the entire building was gutted and retrofitted, was the old Dearborn High, the old Adams Junior High School, which is now an office building. That building was, was gutted and redone, uh, back in the eighties. And, uh, I believe there's a board member who might have an office in that building to this day. And, and, uh, so that is an example of a building that, uh, was repurposed, but yet that historical integrity of that building still exists. And, and the point that someone made about Fortson, you're absolutely right. In two thousand and three, when the addition was put onto Fortson, brand-new, beautiful, state-of-the-art addition, that cafeteria and those classrooms are beautifully, I'm brand-new. But the exterior, they actually went to that same quarry that, uh, the original.
Stone came.
Stone came from and got the stone from there. And the architects who designed that were as recognized by the state of Michigan for their, uh, work in maintaining the historical integrity of Fortson High School with that addition. So I think there is room for both, uh, for both concepts and both ideas. It's going to be striking that balance with the community and, and that understanding between the community. There will be immediate, um, benefits to any bond that's passed because, you know, Tom and, and Mark and his guys have a list of things that need to be done and can be done. And even when you buy a brand-new home, you know, the very next year, you may be updating parts of it or doing work to maintain that home. We'll always need to do that for our buildings, if they're brand-new or if they're a hundred years old. You're always going to have to be maintaining those buildings and putting money and investing money into those buildings. That's part of building, that's part of ownership of a building. So that will be part of it as well. Safety, security, uh, technology, uh, and some of the more immediate needs can be done, will be able to be addressed right away. But this is, as all of you have very clearly said, uh, this is a plan for the future. So, uh, respect that. Respect, I respect those opinions and, and appreciate those thoughts very much. Helps us in our, in our work that we will ultimately end up having to do.
Mr. Wolf?
One of the questions that usually come up when we have these discussions is, why don't we apply for grants? And I don't know if you know, remember Ms. Embirik over there? We've already done four or five grants. We're successful with one of them. So we're continuing to do that. Uh, we did apply for multi-hundred-million ones that unfortunately we didn't get. That's American Builders. You know, but we're waiting out for the next phase because they give us some comments, so we'll update our, our application and, and with some of the questions, and we'll apply again. So it's not like we're sitting on our laurels saying, woe is me. We're trying to be aggressive too and looking for extra money to come in.
Just to follow up on, uh, trustee Moses's request, and we had a meeting yesterday. It was a great meeting. Thank you. With the Essers Fund, I mean, people out there think we got a couple billion dollars that we wasted. Why don't we put a, like, simple graph together, how much money did we receive and where did we spend it? Just that simple.
Yep. Communication's already started, but we can update it for this last school year.
See? Thank you.
Yep.
Trustee, I mean, Dr. Maliko.
Thank you. I just had a couple of comments further. So Fortson, when the fielding came in and they did the community meeting, when they came in there and they've been in many high schools, they said this was the most beautiful high school they've been in, in the U.S. Don Wetruba said that from M.A.S.B. So they recognize, you know, the uniqueness of the, the architecture and the history there, even though it may not come out everywhere in their report. I would also just say too, to your point, um, safety and security and technology. And I know President Barry, you and I talked about this last week and I think a little bit this week. We're having these, um, and it's happening all over the U.S. It was the big concern last week at the superintendent conference. These threats that are happening all over the dish. These threats that are happening all over the district. We put out a joint letter with the, uh, chief, myself. And I'm bringing this up for, for a specific point, but it's happening now, it's happening all, all over. And we're taking a, a hard stance on, um, students that are, uh, committing these offenses because it's disrupting communities and it's not a joke. Um, it's happening in a lot of places and it's unacceptable. So we're taking a hard stance. I'm also going to be putting out a couple of one-minute messages along with that communication. Part of my point to bring it up is because it's happening now and just to, you know, remind parents that kids can be prosecuted. I think President Barry said last time, when these things happen, they'll come to your homes. But, um, sa- safety, security, technology are things that we need to upgrade over a certain time. And that will be needed in a bond. And we are doing a lot with cameras, but again, the funding, we, we did get some state funding for that as well.
We got Esser federal funding for, I'm not, E-rate federal funding for a lot of the work we've just recently done on the.
But we would like to even expand that further. We know everybody wants to increase safety. So those are very important things. And the other, last thing I, we are continuing and we're glad to have Lauren on the team. One of the things that we did get were 2.5 million for CTE, uh, increases at the Berry Center and then 1.5 million for green schools. Uh, I know that, um, Senator Camilleri and our local sen, uh, Representative Arhat Burns and, um, uh, Senator Santana were supportive of that and with that when that came through. So those are other ways that we are working with the legislature to try to get additional funding. So thank you.
Sure. Any final thoughts? Side. So this meeting was highly advertised. I know a lot of the, I mean, the, the public schools put it on social media. A lot of my, my colleagues shared it and commented and we have three people in the audience. And I like all three of you, so friends and neighbors. Uh, and I know there's some people watching. This has been livestreamed right on YouTube. So all I can say is please, when we have these forums, show up. Be hard on us. Tell us what you honestly feel, what you want. We need that information. So the last thing I want to see is what happened in, you know, previous campaigns where people don't show up and we're ready to make decisions and like, how can we even tell us about this? We've been talking about this for a couple of years now. So to our constituents, our parents, our taxpayers, our business people, all of our stakeholders, please show up at these forums, uh, give us the tough questions. We want to hear from you. Anything else? All right, you want to start a conversation and we started a conversation. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.